May good tag sa tanan. 101st regular session is here by call order. To start with, may I request the Honorable Catherine Tralba for the invocation, to be followed by the singing of the Philippine National anthem.
Hala nate, marvinon. Let us all pray, Heaven and Father. We would like to thank you for this very moment, for this very beautiful morning you gave Antaraan Thank you once again, Father, for taking good care of us. Thank you, Father, for the unconditional love that you bestowed to each and everyone of us. Father, as we continue with our mandate as members of this Sangunyang Bayan, may you will continue to pour out your blessings, pour out, Father God, enough courage and wisdom, knowledge and wisdom, Father, so that we may be able to give sufficient help to our constituents in this municipality of Ipin. Father, bless our presiding officer as he presides over this regular session. Bless, Father, the members of this honorable chamber. Bless our Sangunyang Secretary and all the staff, Father, and all the visitors that are present today. Your love, Father, that we embrace always. Thank you, Father, for thy faithfulness. As we go on, Father, may you bless each and every one of us and may the things that we will discuss today, makahata ginoo o katagbawan sa matag-usang individual ginoo din sa lungsod sa Ipin. Father, this is all we ask with thanksgiving in our hearts. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayo ng magili, kadas na sila malan. Talap ng muso, sakit na po'y bumay. Umpa ng ibig, kaya na lang magili. Sabak ng rugi, ipa pa's kisipin. Sa tanan, dinsisilang, sa nangit panggagaw. Ayun na lang, baka ang isa't ang paleng minamal. Atisla't lang, baka ang may kapil na talat. Ang pinupila, baka ang tayong, ang paleng ating. Tiska na moro, ngang parang masipan. Tayo ng isa't ang pinigot. Ang tayong, tayo ngang parang masipan. Tayo ng tayong, ang paleng ating.
You may now take your seats. I'd like to request our Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Hala. Okay, good morning, Twitch and everyone. Welcome to the 101st regular session of the Sangunyang Bayan. Present for today's regular session, Mr. Chair, the following: The Honorable Vice Mayor Ramses Troy de Oligario, Honorable Catherine Tralba,
Present.
Honorable Trixemil Palalon, Honorable Ray Andy Oligario, and we have Honorable Alapid Muhammad.
Present.
On record, there are only five, sir. We are not yet en coro.
With only five members present, the Chair would like to declare a 15-minute recess while waiting for the others to come. the Chair would like to declare a 15-minute recess while waiting for the others to come. There is a motion for the adoption. Julie seconded by the Honorable Palalon. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? There being none, the motion is here by vote.
We are now on the visitors. Our Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitors. First visitor, Mr. Chair, we have here the head of the mittsum, the person of Mr. Roger Lopez.
Okay, rule suspended. With the presence of the Honorable Mr. Roger Lopez, our mittsum head, since the honorable Sabiho requested his presence, but the honorable Sabiho is on leave.
So, we will just request Mr. Lopez, Mr. Chair, to be back on the next regular session if the honorable Sabiho is already present.
Next.
We have here another Mr. Chair, the head of the mido, and the person of Mr. Boyat Sumatra.
Mr. Sumatra is now recognized.
Mr. Chair, the presence of Mr. Sumatra has concern with these humble representations, concern also that was raised last regular session pertaining to the traffic in the market. This issue, I would like to inform the Mr. Sumatra that this issue was raised before the transfer of the vendors to their permanent stalls inside the public market. Sir Yet, kabahin ni kanang, kanabitang magdoble parking diya sa mercado. Wala namang good may nakita nga presensya sa mess force ba, PNP, dihaasulod sa mercado. Tapos ang parking nagka-salimoang, in short, no? Nagkasalimoang. Then kita, sa lungsod sa Ipil, most likely, we can understand, but then, we are not the only people that are visiting the public market. We are friends from the neighboring municipalities that are having their marketing in our municipality. Pwede ka mo respond, Ani sir?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to greet everyone. Blessed morning sa inyong tanan, no? Vice Mayor Buntag, this August body. Regarding that concern, yes, tinutong istorya ni Kuncial Kati because I was also informed during that night after the incident. Katung concerned nga, nag-inform sa kuwan through messenger, and then I called it up. Tinutong nga katung panahon na kay kanang atong mercado, even katung biportas ni transferang mga kuwan, daghanan na siyang concern kay, especially five o'clock onward kay mawagin na siya ang panahon sa pagpanyanggida. Even Councillor Muhammad experienced na magistorya na 'yung media, no? Siguro lang katung panahon na, naatlan lang siya nga kuwan yud kaayo ang traffic. Pero sa pagkakaroon after that, after June 19, ni-transfer na namang kuwan which nakahatag na po duday nga, nga ka-hagugaway ang atong traffic kay, personally, I am attending the traffic together with two mittsum nag-assign ni Roger dito karoon. And katung panahon na po, usaragin ang akong miss force kay ang usakam miss force nagvakasyon. So, muna nga ako diya matlan ko tag seven o'clock in the evening extending my duty, muingon namang gani ang mga mamalitay diya nga. Uber time namang kaser ko, mawagin niyang itawag sa tuwang trabaho nga dilik tapu di magpa-relax-relax dery. Sa pagkakaroon po, ang akong ginhaimo early, magsurusurin ako with my migapon. Dili lang sa traffic, kundi li, appeal na po ang mga stall owner diya kay, as we agreed, tanan nga mga violation nga ilang himoon diya, especially sa bagong nga merkado nga ilang ibalhinan, ang ilahang mga extension wala na namo ginaallow. Maupun na karoon ang among tukiun sa General Assembly sa Ipil Central Market Association in which nagpasalamat po ko sa ilahang association kay, "They are supporting the cause of mido," nga mahimong hamugaway ang ato ang mercado. Which daghan ni appreciate tungut kay ang ato ang bagong mercado luag na, no? Luag na dilik lang ang kuwan. Sa ato ang isdaan, naapamangyapon pero dun na sila uras nga among ginatag kay, early morning up to nine o'clock ako ginaslangin kuwan na lang. Ako na lang ginaconsider kay maupamay po pagpangabot sa ilang mga isda. And then every Tuesday, kanapong atong gulayan, dun na po na sila upat ka-track nga magdiskarga. Up to nine o'clock ako rapos lang iallow. After nine o'clock clear na ang maong katung asadapit ang ato ang mga mamarking nga'y mamalitay diya.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to add, are you through? That was my concern before way back to 2016 paginini, traffic sa ato ang Ipil Public Market. I even suggested before that to include the traffic management sa ato ang traffic code ang ato ang Ipil Public Market. It's because when the traffic code was crafted by the Honorable Alibotdan before, she did not include the vicinity, no? The whole vicinity of the Ipil Public Market. But now, siguro, I have been suggesting this for siguro almost eight years na ang nilapas, no? 2016 that I suggested this to our mittsum head, Roger Lopez, the previous committee chairperson sa transportation. I include nagyud ang public market sa traffic management sa mittsum kay, wak pa may mga balaon diha nga no? Parking, one-way, or whatsoever, nga nasulod sa ato ang traffic code. So, siguro, it's high time na karoon with you, Roger Lopez, to sit down together with our mittsum head para mo suggest kung asa ang designated parking area sa four-wheel drive, asa ang designated parking area sa single motorcycle, asa ang parking area sa ato ang motor cab forehead. So, para magarrange siya gina siya after all kay karoon, mura pwidi naman kay napasta naman balik. So, siguro, I would like to suggest nga, ato na gini appeal sa ato ang traffic code ang ato ang kuwan para makatiket na ato mga personahe sa mittsum diha. Kay questionan mo po na sila, ano gitikitan, magkunin mo nga, wak man ay ordinansa, di ba?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sir Yet, unsay naitabo, with those previous years, naaman tay makita ang PNP personnel sa market assisting the flow of the traffic. Tapos karoon wala na, unsay naitabo?
Muna akong i-pangotana po sa ilahang kuwan, sa ilan ni Chip ampuni, no? Request ko o kuwan, pulis yud nga, mo-hatag yud uksupod sa tuang mido kay naaman na po sa tuang ordinansa ang PNP as part of the market committee, no? So, maupun na nga, muhangi po kurun sa August body nga, himoon unta siya nga permanent diya, nga assign.
Yes, as what I have mentioned a while ago nga. Formulate ang ordinansa, gikaninyo ang maong mga sugyod para ato ma-legislate dery. Para mas kusog ang enforcement sa tuang Ipil MPS nga mga personahe nga. Ilagit po ng tinutun kay, siyempre na may ordinansa. Pero sa karoon, mura magisod pa man sila buyagun, basig makasugata sila, wak anong gbuyag magkunin mo dery. Wala man i-no parking sign dery, wala pa man i-ordinansa, may nanabang ang mga instances. So, muna nga, siguro karoon, high time na ikaw mo sit down with our Roger and together with our market chairperson sa transportation para maka-formulate na ug-ordinansa, para mapasta, umahmugaway na gina ato ang mercado siguro.
And then additional po na Honorable Vice Mayor kanang, ang presence po sa pulis will also deter the kuwan kani mga, may visibility ang pulis.
Together with our mittsum, siguro. Muna nga na mo isuggest bang, eto i-pasta, asa ang four-wheel? Four-wheel lagi makita diya, asa ang motor, motor, single lagi yud. Uka na mga presence ato mga trippers bitaw kay ioccupy namang ilatan na dina, wak nagimakaparking nga four-wheel nga drive nga vehicles yud.
Na, namig ikuwan dito, iassign.
Idesignate ba? Katung old nga bagsa, kahoy nga bagsakan sa isda sa una. Pwede siya diya ang four-wheel, fish landing sa una, oh. Pwede diya four-wheel lagi apun para kayo man magtutuyok. Magtutuyok na lang kay di man ka-parking, di? Makabalog asam parking yud.
Sige, Vice ka mo, muna ng kuwan. Actually, na naman na karoon, aman lang ang ginhaimo. Na palang migi pangbungkal dito nga, wala panahon man o hipo sa ilang mga kuwan. Especially katung mga lamisa sa karnihan nga gipang pumkrit nila. So, mauput yam ginahinluan karoon. And hopefully karoon hapun mahumagin bitanan.
Okay, kay once kami magagad agad me for legislation, no? For the crafting of those ordinances.
Thank you, sir.
Managing the presence of the Honorable Senator.
Po si Maslindot siguro, iribisit na tuang transportation ordinans ato, okay? Pu di man masulod dito.
Traffic code.
Probleman eh, share buit, pu di masulod dito.
Sa pagkaroon, Sir Yet, are you through, Honorable Ramos?
Kay duga ina kaya pana transportation ordinans ato, duga ina kena wak amen.
Yeah, traffic code.
Meron na di amen dery, more than five years na siya?
Subrapa?
Subrapa.
Subrapa. Twenty fifteen, pana.
So, we'd like, kana problema address na, we'll request siguro the chairman of the transportation to make the sari amendments of the transportation.
To include the vicinity of our Ipil Public Market.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Honorable Tralba.
Sir Yet, sa pagkaroon, kinsay gaman sa traffic dito?
Na ako'y dua kamichom ang gido ngan ni Roger. Na, dua kamichom o dua ka, ako ang kuwan yud miss force.
So, tamon na sila sa buyag-buyag lang, buyag-buyagun lang. Kay di man ta maka-enforce, cannot implement, tungut kay wala man na siya na-incorporates sa karni ordinans.
nga ma-correct lang yud ng ilang kuwan, ilang parking area. Then, na ako'y dugoang Vice and nakabalon na po si Honorable Ramos, Ani. Kanay regarding bitaw sa ato ang dakung kanal diha, nga wala i-cover kay, na naging hagbong diya, nabuak ang aning, kene. Taga, dun andri samapod siguro to. So, sa ako magumpagkahi balo ano, national kuwan maginasiya kay, Plaid Control Project manak, panahon pa na ni former mayor, Hildwin Alibotdan. Wala siya kuwan din, wala ba makoveran. Taas kay na siya na-expand sa mga, wala siya mga 100 kapin, 132 meters. And then, ang lap doon ano is three meters. So, ma-cover na siya, mamahimo na siyang makatabang sa tuang traffic kay mahimo man na parkingan.
So... Mr. Chair, please do acknowledge the Honorable Ramos.
The Honorable Ramos.
Mayos siguro, ato siguro ipatawag ang engineering. Kadi takai balo kung kana projecto, wak ina muman. Kano man na, alantan na po, ato bantana onang kanang program mo borke, appeal ba na pagcover sa opin kanal maguna, niapertin dili ka duagun, may gani kay usarapin haagbong niya? Da big madugangan, responsibility ganas ejiyo. Dunemadisgrasya. So, muna nga, we'll request engineering, di re next session to appear in the sa during our session sa next session nato para maklaro na to o unsay status na na project karoon.
Thank you, okay.
Yes. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, may I have the floor?
Okay, go ahead.
I subscribe with the suggestion of the Honorable Ramos, but then, Mr. Chair, please do consider that this is an alarming case, no? And this is an urgent, no? Urgent matter. Can we request Mr. Chair that we will call now the municipal engineer?
Okay, as per our secretary, he has an invitation for today's regular session.
Another invitation?
Yeah, yeah. He was invited last regular session for him to appear in today's regular session. Abot to add also, isgut-isgut namagunino, in aid of legislation kay, ikaw, kita, we were able to visit, no? Mga public markets in different municipalities, cities for us to benchmark the best practices. Daghan na tag mo obserbahan nga mga mayang practices. Sa atong obserbahan sa ibang mercado, nariki sila uras aning, as you have mentioned a while ago, sa fish landing, inaniriki mo uras mo, drops in 'yung produkto, as well as kanning, kay gagmay mukina ato ang dalan sa ato ang public market. Siguro ato pong tagaag uras ng magdi-deliver bugas, inanira mo tamans buntag, magloading, hugan-loading, no? Kay gagmay kaayo, siguro to add, sa ato ang pag-incorporates sa ato ang traffic code sa tung Ipil Public Market. Siguro ma-consider na nga mga butang, kaya magloading, hugan-loading sa mga goods. Kay gagmay magikina ato ang dalan mang good niya, dagko kay mga trucks, especially kani magdi-deliver bugas, mag-parking, di ba? Pwede na ta na siya siguro ma-consider?
Pwede na siya Vice, actually, appeal yud sa bung naisgutan ni Kuncial Ramos, no? Ngahahimo, ato siyang ikuwan, regulate na to ang ilahang gidak unpo sa truck. nga mahimo ato siyang i-kuwan regulate na tuwang ilahang gidak unpo sa truck especially ten-wheelers
Bitaw kay mga guba biya po natundalan
Guba gyan siya so atong ela ang kuwan kay maka-remember kung panahon mo sa kuka kulas sa una delete me ka-discarga diha sa sintrong
Siguro ma-consider na na nas engineer kulan-kulan but before we will entertain engineer kulan-kulan siguro kana bitaw entrans yud na Metro IPIL diha na maginadapat diha loading, hugan loading sa ilahang mga goods so siguro ma-apil ala po na dina sa pagplano kay entrance na sa atong IPIL public market yud niya sahimbag dungan tag tulok a truck, mag-unload, diskarga diha sa Metro IPIL dapat so apil na po dax siguro siya ma-consider
Mr. Chair, I think our municipal engineer is ready here can we give time to engineer kulan-kulan?
Okay, thank you Mr. Sumato
Thank you sir Boye
Engineer Kulankulan, your honor, good night
Good morning to our residing officer Vice Mayor Ramses Troy de Oligario our majority floor leader Kuncial Toralba members of the Sagunyang Bayan of IPIL council, visitors, good morning
The Honorable Catalunya
Good morning Mr. Chair, good morning engineer as I have requested from the last session if you could give us an update as to the present status of the municipal health unit and as to our expected completion and turnover of the project
Good morning again, Mr. Chair may I request for Kanang magkuwan o project tour
Yes, mas better kung nati pictures
So that mapakita ng pictures
A privilege motion Mr. Chair recess for two minutes
Your recess
Madagang Pidibana madagang sir? Or ma-patayang oras? Pising na lahat. Ay nasa pising. Ay, konser, nasa pisi sa unit. Itong... Pidibu, koo ano ng pahinga? Taganong? Ayaw, sir, magkakaya oras.
(MUSIK)
Ano ba? Wala na ilang bisita no?
Wala na.
Solicita? Ah, pa-pass lahat.
Pa-pass lahat.
Tulete?
Okay na maliin din eh, later na lang, no?
Wala.
Ah, wala pa daw ng pahinga.
Ang pictures?
Ipada'yan sira.
Mister Chair, we are now on the privilege hour. Any members of this honorable chamber, who wants to avail the privilege hour? You may raise your hands so that you will be recognized by our presiding officer. Mister Chair, no one raised their hands, so we will proceed, Mister Chair.
May may proceed? Uh, with the reading of the minutes of previous session, same time the approval.
Mister Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session and moving for the approval of the same.
There's motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session and the approval. Julie seconded by the honorable Palalon, discussion. Any objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the reference of business.
Okay, for the reference of business, candidate of first reading, under the proposal denance, we have... Sorry. Under the communications, we have here the annual budget for CY 2024, barangayes, poblasyon, donantes, SK, supplemental budget number one for barangay bankiruan.
Mister Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Appropriation.
Refer to Committee on Appropriation.
Item two is the supplemental budget number one of barangay Makilas.
Mister Chair, I move that this matter, the same, be referred to the Committee on Appropriation.
Refer to Committee on Appropriation.
Julie endorses from the item C, Julie endorses on the mayor, is a copy of the Mowa to be entered into bayan between LGE EPEL and SWD for the third and fourth quarter release of social pension for indigent senior citizens.
Mister Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions.
Refer to Committee on Rules.
We're now the committee report, sir.
Okay, committee report.
We are now on the committee reports. Uh, Mister Chair, I move that the honorable Trixie Mill Palalon be recognized.
Honorable Palalon, go ahead.
Committee report numbers 358 and 359 on Committee on Appropriation. The subjects are the supplemental budget number one for CY 2024 of barangay tenan amounting to 30,890.95 pesos and the barangay annual budget for the year 2024 of barangay Logan amounting to 2,569,030 pesos. The remarks and recommendation of the Committee on Appropriation, to which was referred the supplemental and annual budget of barangay tenan and barangay Logan of this municipality for review, evaluation and approval. The said supplemental and annual budget for the year 2024 has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval, subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines or procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, Budgeting, Accounting and Auditing Rules and Regulations. Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of the committee report number 358 and 359.
Okay, motion. Uh, in a second for the motion, for the adoption. Do the seconded discussion, any objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move to pass for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety of the supplemental budget number one for the year 2024 of barangay tenan amounting to 30,890.95 pesos and the barangay annual budget for the year 2024 of barangay Logan amounting to 2,569,030 pesos. I so moved, Mister Chair.
Seconded motion. Julie seconded. Discussion, amendments, objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved.
That would be all, Mister Chair.
Thank you, honorable Palalon.
Mister Chair, I have a committee report, Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions, committee report number 360. Subject is the endorsed letter from the office of the municipal mayor for adoption and implementation of updated citizens charter for the municipality of Epeel. The remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions to which the above the subject matter was referred for review, in compliance to Republic Act number 11032, an act promoting ease of doing business and efficient delivery of government services, thus enable to enable the state to promote integrity, accountability, proper management of public affairs and public property, as well as to establish effective practices aimed at efficient turnaround of the delivery of government services. The committee therefore is recommending for the adoption and implementation of updated citizens charter for the municipality of Epeel. Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report number 360.
Seconded motion. Julie seconded. Discussion? Any objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved.
Mister Chair, I move for a resolution for the adoption and implementation of the updated citizens charter for the municipality of Epeel.
Second. Julie seconded. Discussion? Amendments? Discussion, uh, objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report, Mister Chair, uh, number 361, still in the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions, uh, refer municipal ordinance declaring bayan kong pinagmulan as an official hymn of the municipality of Epeel. The remarks and recommendations of the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred for review. After review, the committee finds some suggestions, recommendations to fit all the, all the, uh, requirements of this said crafted municipal ordinance. Thus, Mister Chair, the, uh, the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions is recommending the said proposed municipal ordinance to be calendered and set for second reading on the next regular session for further deliberation and discussion. I so moved, Mister Chair. Uh, I move for the adoption of this committee report number 361, Mister Chair.
Second to the motion for the adoption of the committee report. Discussion? Objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mister Chair. That would be all for the Committee on Rules. Another more committee reports from the other members of this honorable chamber. I think, Mister Chair, there are no more committee reports. We will proceed, Mister Chair.
Okay, may proceed. Madam Secretary for the... I think there's no color business. May we proceed with the other matters? Okay na, engineer?
Okay na. Uh, Mister, uh, Mister Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules, Mister Chair, again, to accommodate our municipal engineer, engineer Kalito Kulan Kulan.
Engineer Kulan Kulan.
Good morning, once again. Thank you for your indulgence. So, I'll be presenting the updates of our health, rural health unit by, by now. This is the perspective no being prepared by DOH Region, Region 9. So now, this is kanang, ang atwang aktwal nga, nga building karoon dito sa poblasyon. Muni ang iyahang pasad. Ang mga salabi no ground floor. Uh, sorry nga na ay mga, mga chairs because uh, kuwanas ya, owned by the, sa health center nga mga bangko. If you can see, uh, all of the electricals, mga ilaw sa ground floor is functioning by now, but, uh, may temporary siya connection. O kani sa ground floor sa gehapon, mga offices, mga rooms. Mga windows, sliding windows. Kani sa second floor hallway, second floor gehapon, na na prepa ng tiles. Um, originally, ang saplan sa, being prepared by the DOH is, uh, intended for only three air conditioning units, but by now, agi andaman of 13 uh, units nga for air conditioning nga, nga outlets. Kay, na may mga naakses si doktora nga outlets. And um, kanapod ang transformer platform no? Kay, I have already requested the Samsung Reco kay, uh, manager Ruben Bonalos for the, kening energization of the building. Just, just kuwan, kening letter that I requested is just last Monday, kay bag ulang yun na human ang iyahang ang electrical installation. So hopefully, if they can install uh, the power lines by this week, um, I can sit down with doktora sa occupancy of the building. Kay, uh, it's already safe nga kanang maghina-hina na og, at sa transition sa atwang health center. That's all, Mister Chair.
Okay, uh, thank you for that presentation, honorable, uh, engineer Kulan Kulan. Dear honorable Katalonya?
Thank you, engineer. Um, uh, I, one issue, uh, that was raised, uh, engineer is the availability of the restrooms ni, the open up ni doktora, kay na apoday, kailangan i-repair. And, um, uh, regarding po'd sa leak sa roofing, uh, ihasad nang i-open. Although diliman na inyo ha parts sa project because it was already established no when you did the renovation of the RHU. Pero iha'tong isa sa iyahang di open nga, um, at issue. And, ang fire exit daw engineer. Ang fire exit.
Thank you, honorable Katalonya. Regarding the roofing leak, leaking of the roofs, uh, we can, we can fix that. Kay, diliman po pwede nga, ilahab ng trabaho dayon, kuwan. Eh, by now, na ay dua kabuk tao dito. Eh, by now, na ay dua kabuk tao dito nag, nag troubleshoot. Uh, because it's very critical kung ma, makuan na ang, ang, if the, if the building is ma fully energized, dilipod maayongan ay laking. And, uh, another thing is, ang atop is, uh, needs kanang maintenance og silhigan tungod sa mga presence of kanang mga big trees, akasya trees, mapundo angkuan, mga dahon, mauto. And, uh, for the water system, I have talked with doktora. Uh, she has available morag 300,000 and, uh, we will try to maximize that uh, by constructing overhead tank and makonek ang, ang pipelines sa water kay, uh, almost ready naman yun ang, ang mga CRs, wala lang na connection because it's not included ang kuwan. And by the way, um, there is an open well constructed there, not in the program of work. Uh, and, uh, uh, we are glad that the well is so adequate. Kanang during sa drought, dagat tubig, uh, the quality of water is, uh, good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, engineer, uh, as to the windows, wala naman tay kuwan no, um, deficiency? Completed na installation of all the windows?
Exactly, ma'am. Uh, by the way, kening, if you can see the, the sliding windows, kening sa ground floor, sliding windows ya, yes, kani, but, uh, hugtan aon ato sa saplan sa DOH, that's only jalusi windows. Pero nag-request doktora which is applicable and presentable po'd, nice po'd nga kanang bagu atong building. So, there are mga variations nga, muna ay daghang mga variation nga na, nahinahimo, but that is, uh, maayaw, maayaw para sa, sa structure mismo kay, eh, especially that doktora is, will be the one to, to direct, direct sa mga, sa usages ni anang building. And, uh, may maputan aon kung, kung kuwan, kening sliding windows po'd.
But as to it's you change.
Mister Chair, nailisan Mister, from jalusi windows sa program, naimo sliding windows.
Kuwan naman siya engineer nyo, 100% installed ang mga windows and kuwan no?
Yes, madam, I was honorable.
Sige, so, um, given these updates, engineer, when do we expect the turnover and blessing of the building?
Uh, hopefully, if the, the building will be, uh, fully energized by this week, I hope we can, uh, have the blessing by two weeks from now. We will pray.
Thank you, thank you engineer for the update.
Okay, anymore queries, clarification?
Uh, Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
I'll allow query. Uh, gusteng pa, clarify the engineer. Was there a kuwan, kening proper to nober sa Mowa building? The to nober mo rasa, di satu iljy. Kay, I understand nga, nagintrojus mga additional information dya. Base gua pan mo to nober, so responsibility na unta sa funding agency to complete. To complete de, kanang face, face one, kay muram, face by face mo gure. Kay gua ma to nober, niya nagintrojus mga imporments, bosing ba question dya sa kuwan na.
Thank you, Honorable, Honorable Ramos. Uh, regarding the face one, I cannot give comment on that, but, uh, I am sure, uh, in, in before we started the, the face two, uh, all the requirements of the, the bank and so with the commission on audit were provided. So, wala na tay kulba bahin sa katong face one.
Niya, before the to nober, presuming nga, dero se to nober. Before the to nober, on the, so naagnay may tabo siguro nga. Kanang inspection si engineer eh, hasta de, de permedisyon de kanang kuwan ba. Kanang pagtrabaho nila kung okay ba, dayon, isotamiso, ukapang si permit. So dun na, na isyo ng ukapang si permit.
Wala pa ba'y daw, kay wala pa man na inspection sa, sa Taga Bureau of Fire po'd, Honorable Ramos.
So, murag, tanaw na kanya niya, murag ma, mauna ang pagkukuha sa building before ukapang si permit. Isyon sa dui, ukapang si permit. Haha. Una ang kaluro na to, nakay. Kinala na katong proseso, should be order le. No, sakto mane giwono, kung wala pa ma-inspection sa fire, kay fire, dagar ba na mga requirements. Kuti rebak aygo, kinala ma-kumple, po na ilam mga, girekwa yato. So, this is, is siguro, teka, ka, kaluro sa kong dunah, kung na-accepter rasa sa, sa health na to, kanang building nga na.
Anyway, Honorable Ramos, we will try to, to exhouse all the, the requirements sa mga, sa DOH and the Bureau of Fire, especially in the occupancy of that structure. Thank you.
Kay kanang building nga is bonded by Department of Health. Muraginana, na, sang funding agency is the DOH, muna funding agency na to. Nalimot lang kong pilato, kantidad na building nga.
Nine point five, nine point five.
Kay dun na, matay plano, ambot na budgetan para na, nga well, uh, fund. Iljy will fund to complete the building, na conditional tag, pilato milyon?
Seven point five, Honorable Ramos.
Oh, seven point five million. Pero kanang seven point five million, dilim na pwede eh, release, not unless nga. Ang katong first face, ampis one, dilim ma-kumplito. Kinala na, komplituhan sa ampis one, bago ta mo proceed sa pisto. Muna ay sakto ta, so sa ang pag, eh, ilang taon na to ba, ang si, ang karbo, procedure. Kanang iwan na, protocol, tanaw na to, klaro. Kay lisobakay gumusano sa audit, ako naka-experience ako na. DBP, once ma-kusyo na na, paning tumbya po'tag, dipisa.
Well noted, Honorable Ramos.
Wala ako, being murag experience ko gamay, kasay niyo, paderbawas gubido, kay DBP go stricto kayo. Muna dere, mayong si mayor, na stricto, stricto ko kayo, pero para na, sa kayuhan na to, tanan. Kadi ko gusto inanang ma, ma, may, na, masana, makasuhan ta, inanang. Ibaluot ta, inanang kung sa mga pamagi, pasikot, sikot na, i-kumplay na to, to, Honorable. Thank you.
Okay, anymore? Clarification? Question?
Last one, uh, engineer, sorry, I forgot to ask. Uh, regarding the variations and the alterations in terms of the plan, uh, sa glass, uh, since, uh, we need approval of the DOH regarding the plan and, um, its, uh, execution, um, kani bang, uh, changes on the glass windows are okay with the DOH? Do we need to ask for, uh, I don't know, maybe, uh, manangit ba ta sa ilaha, as to the variations that we did?
Um, per recommendation of Doctor Berzon, it is okay, Honorable Catalunya, and, uh, espes, uh, what is important is, uh, there is no money involved. So, ang katong ubang item, murag i-sliding window, may naanat lang.
Thank you, engineer.
Okay, anymore? Clarification? Okay, engineer, thank you.
Ah, okay na, okay na siya.
Okay, uh, Dear Honorable Catalunya, next, concern?
Yes, uh, good morning, Mister Chair. I have, um, uh, I, I want to raise an issue later, but, uh, can I do it, uh, maybe on the other matters?
Other matters?
Ah, ah, sorry, other matters, ah, di ay, sorry. Kay na, na-stol mane ito, sorry kayo. Um, yes, uh, Mister Chair, I would like to, um, move that this August body be converted to, uh, Committee of the Whole, uh, as I have here, uh, proposed ordinance that needs urgency because this, uh, matter, uh, will be on a Friday and we do not have any more session.
Can you move first for the urgency of the matter?
Um, uh, Mister Chair, I move for the urgency of the, um, matter.
Second to the motion for the urgency. Do the second discussion, any objection, there being none the motion, see by proof. Yeah.
Um, Mister Chair, I have here a request from our provincial administrator uh, regarding, um, the upcoming celebration, second anniversary uh, of the, um, Sambogasibugay. And, uh, with that celebration, Mister Chair, they have, uh, request for, um, an event that will be held in the Epelespad School on June 28, this coming Friday. So, um, I move for, uh, Mister Chair, propose an ordinance for temporary closure of Magsay Say Road in Poblasyon and implementation of one-way traffic scheme along a portion of Mayor Henarosa Street, uh, Sukgang Street towards San Juan Street, uh, on June 28, this coming Friday, from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM to accommodate the, um, activity, uh, or event, uh, anniversary concert that will be held in Epelespad School in Poblasyon, Epeel, Sambogasibugay.
In second the motion?
Second to that motion, Mister Chair.
Do the second by Dear Honorable Palalo. Okay, discussion, any clarifications?
Uh, discussion, Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
Let, let copies of this, uh, uh, ordinance be furnished to the, uh, force multipliers, especially our, uh, municipal police station.
Okay, I'd just like to ask the barangay chairperson of barangay Poblasyon if nakareceive kani nga copy request. Since, uh, it has been indicated that, that is copy furnished barangay council of barangay Poblasyon.
Good morning, uh, so paro wala pa min nakareceive.
I furnish na lang ang traffic plan of flow?
Yes, I will provide.
Together with the ordinance. Anymore discussion? Clarifications? Amendments? Any objection? There being none the motion, see by proof. Okay, uh, move, valid sa regular session.
Uh, I move that this, uh, session be back to order, Mister Chair.
Okay, back to regular session.
Ordinance, road closure.
Ordinance, sir.
Temporary road closure.
Parihatong February, sir. The same.
Okay, rasa.
Yeah, yeah.
Kay, we are, we are on the kuwan na.
Okay, anymore? Other matters, other concerns?
Other matters, Mister Chair.
Dear Honorable Palalo.
Uh, last regular session, there was a matter referred to the committee on housing and land utilization. The, uh, uh, referral was all about the, uh, proposed 4PH program of the government, the Pambansang Pabahay Para Sa Pilipino program for the implementation in this municipality. Uh, the Sambor representation, uh, had a conversation with the municipal planning and development officer, uh, and the person of engineering, Nima Dipotado, and, uh, inquiring, uh, uh, about the said, the said, uh, proposed, uh, project. And, uh, she clarified that all are set already. So, Mister Chair, uh, there was a a pending memorandum of agreement in the Committee on Rules, Ordinances, and Resolutions, uh, pending because we waited for the contractor or the developer to appear before the Sangunyang Bayan for some inquiries. Henceforth, the, uh, contractor had appeared last a regular session eh, for the bipartime, uh, Mowa, Mister Chair. So to this, Mister Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules uh, for the passage, uh, for the possible, uh, passage of the memorandum of agreement for the said project.
Any second? Do the second.
Suspension?
Rule suspended?
Mister Chair, I move for a memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the local government unit with the, uh, developer of the 4PH program, uh, Arsent Engineering Company represented by the architect Nazario A. Santos. The, at the same time, the general manager with postal address at 402, uh, Dalia Street, uh, Maniville, La Subdivision, Talamban, Cebu City. Uh, in the same manner, approving the content of the Mowa, Mister Chair.
Any second the motion? Do the second discussion? Any amendments, objection, there being none the motion, see by proof.
Another resolution, Mister Chair, authorizing the local chief executive, the Honorable Anna Melce Oligario to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the, uh, Arsent Engineering Company represented by the, its general manager, Nazario A. Santos, with postal address at, uh, 402 Dalia Street, Maniville Subdivision, Talamban, Cebu City, and authorizing the same to sign for and behalf of the local government unit of Epeel.
Any second the motion? Do the second by Dear Honorable Palalo. Discussion? Any amendments, objection, there being none the motion, see by proof.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Another, uh, other matters, Mister Chair. Uh, this, this has concern with the, uh, old municipal building. Discussan ato, unsay, unsay, unsanay dagan ato, ato? Because this was tackled long time. Old municipal building.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Dear Honorable Ramos?
Uh, for a previous years, mabasiguro na, atong gay, take up na, po di opesu de mayor, by na ng old building. So, dagatong, katambung sa meeting, dayon, ang proposal na to, tuntuwantak. Dun ato, suggestion na, creating committee. Creating committee, na responsible hindi formulating, uh, guidelines, siguro, guidelines, and how to dispose, or in how to, uh, kay dun na mokor resolution na to, god, may resolution, may resolution, resolution be for resto, to murag, to have at, room. Muraginana, parintahan na to, ama o nga building with the conditions that the one who, who purpose to rent the building will be the one to, uh, make the wrong plan, building plan. Dilik kita'y magbok, kay kung kita'y maghino o building plan, una, atong ipa-public hearing, public bidding na to, udi sila gusto, sa mapano to. So, ma, ma, kuwan, apke, sumas mayo, nga sila'y mo purpose nga inaning, playo, isapet sa ato, pro, pro, pro. Pro ban na to. So, wa' mantuma, wa' mantumuliyok tung committee. Kay kini gong inaning mga problema, ugi atong endorse committee, udi na to hisgutan sa dia, dia, dayon, usehmo na to, dilik, bedalik. So kay wa' ma create ang committee, siguro, will, kuwan si mayor, atong kuwan si mayor, atong iconsider mayor, atong hayon siguro, uga nak create na base ang committee, dayan atong palapon kung usay status samaw nga god. Kaya guidelines, sumang imo na to to, and how to 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 kuwan, unsay paagi ba? Para ma kuwan na to ng building. Pasta kay, si mayor, iagree na to nga parintahan na na to ama area.
Mr. Chair. I can remember that the Honorable Ramos has suggested and requested to re-resurvey the area. Pero wala may naitabo, sir, no? If, Mr. Chair, if other members of this honorable chamber is amenable, we will request or commission the Honorable Ramos for the said plan. Now, being the chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means. Kaya sa una, si Kapitan Chantiman to, so wala na siya, and siguro, sir, sa formulation sa mga palisiya, sir, siguro pwede yun na mo ma kuwan, sir. Kaya, the mayor called me to discuss this matter today, para daw nga maplancha na to. Then, I also suggested to mayor, kung pwede, ikaw ang mo chair aning nga, aning nga, nga proposal na to, wala may problema si mayor, sir. So, if other members of this honorable chamber is amenable, I move that the Honorable Ramos will chair this formulation of the policies for this old municipal building of this municipality, para mapustro na yutanan.
Okay, thank you. I accepted the
Okay.
the order, no? Dayon, ang ako dia, magimo tag palisiya. Kabayan na ng ato nga building na dayon pukuman, we should endorse to the mayor for his, for her approval. Atong ipastargod. Kaya ako, per dugar, wala wala tula tanag, kanusa na muliwak na. Oh. Ako upos mo kung nanang ibaligya, gana ibaligya, okay maka kwarta ta, pero pila pa gaso na kwarta deler kayo. We're saying, ang importante, the first step, yun mo dia, relocation, no? Surebe, resurbe ang direyagod. Para ma, para ma, para ma exclude. Kana porsion nga, gepang dunet na to. Akadunet at peace, akadunet barangay, eh, Poblacion. Gana, ma-exclude na. Why problema ni building, dere, kana ng, kana ng COVID court. Kaya ato manaw, buwan manamadunet. So ato ano, sunod tong sugatan na, goon ba ng building nga dia, ugi padayo ba ng na dia.
Okay na, sir. Thank you for the acceptance. Another, Mr. Chair. This come to my concern, being the chairperson on the Committee on Appropriation. In the local government code, it says that the barangays will prepare their annual budget for the next fiscal year, no? But up to this moment, Mr. Chair, we have here the records of the barangays that has not submitted yet that annual budget for 2024. So, I would like to call the attention of Sir Roy Olegario, being the Liga president, to please call also the attention of the different barangays na, sir, ang mga lista dinin sa tua, makahatagme sa imuhakaron, sa li sa mga barangays na wala nag-submit sa ilang annual budget for 2024. So, sobra na, mukabat na dool to nga sa tuig, no? Then supposedly, nagcraft napod sila for another annual budget for 2025, but then, for 2024, the rest of the barangays, and ako ma-mention, wala pa sila nakasubmit. So during your Liga meeting, I too hope nga, mapakita sa ilaha, sir. Kaya, diligud sila ka, sometimes kana ng linear tramandud ka ayopod ang atong local government, especially the Sangunyang Bayan, nga mo review sa ilahang annual budget. But then, we as the Liga president, thank you for noting that para sa next regular session ninyo, sir, sa Liga ng mga barangay, inyo hang ma appeal or discuss ang non-submission of the annual budget for 2024. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Olegario. The Honorable Olegario first. Please, Mike.
Honorable Alba, to himong kuwan noted to.
Thank you, sir.
General Ramos, yes.
Another, other matter, gusto ko itikap. Kedy bayan sa market. Kaya kana ng market, wa agin na mapel sa tong lugar binukod, proban. So ako lang ipa-kuwan dre, kaya, kung manakong drive. Manak, ako lang ipasa na to, basig ma-disapprove. Apitar mo eleksyon ko. So ako ikuwan na, ako i-pasa siguro na. Nick, para regular, next regulation, ma-take up na to. Kaya as committee chairman sa Ways and Means, nya, ako gustong ipa-cootor na si Honorable Alba. Man pa ng mga kauban na to. Para ma-sugatan na to na na. Kaya importante kayo, dele ina ng kuwan, kana ng, kana ng dakopogay increase, kana reasonable increase. Reasonable increase, god. Na i-giru-kumensi, mysterious matras ako. Ako ang gilantao, kung pwede ba to i-kuwan na to, incorporate sa to nga amended kuwan, kening market code. Bantahan. Dayan, ika dumaon, na gusto na kong ipa-kuwan dre, ipa-ano dre sa to sa concero. Na pass ko resolution nga two weeks, igwo siguro. Kani bayan bito sa, no, ordinance. Kening, an ordinance mandating all barangay chairman oh, punang barangay, of the 28 barangays of the municipality of Epe, to report all kinds of building constructions without any building permit. All government, all, and private lines to the municipal engineering office immediately impose appropriate sanctions penalty as provided in the National Building Code of the Philippines. Na sambet na na ko niya sa previous session, god. Tuwa niya sa committee ni, Kati, Honorable Kati Torba. Kung kuwan na to niy, liwko niya, kaya number one, god, ako gong problema dili sa to sa Epe. This time, kena lang gina to, resolve na to, kana ng mga informationers na moyo. Ano along de, kana ng, kana ng, kana ng road allowance. Kaya importante kana, mano problema na to, mano dele, tadayan makaupin, maka karsada dren na to, to, ano mga informationers, pati na gana. So number one, gyan himo ang siguro, kena na matay housing. Kana gi, appoint ni mayor, si Hilagan ba, Isagan? So housing officer. So, ang mayon tanan na maka conduct sa, kana ng nanasay listing sa kada barangay, o, kesa mga informationers. Para duna te, best mark, aso tabi sugon. Kaya haron, sayo na na ma-resolve na to ng problema. Di sa Epe, kama mga informationers, kaya sige na god. Sige, dugang, sige, dugang, anan na. Kada, murakada bulan, ay maga-kustrak, o mga building, di manang head, guys, taga, di pa manang head, guys, sa edyo, ah, kana nga, sa ato, sa edyo, kana mga road bito, ma, dibulob. Balayan nila, kaya abin na, abin na lang, kuwan, kening public lands, o kana, oh, nator, public lands, bagay na gaya, sakubko sa to, besetip. So, kena na ato ngi, to address that problem. To, to an ordinance, kini siguro, ordinance atong gi, pasa, basig ma-sulban. Di man gama, ganyan, one hundred percent ma-sulban, at least ma-kuwan god. Kaya ato mga barangay captain, para ako observation. Deli kaya sila mo, ka, abin lang. Deli ni, one of their, kana mandate, kani niya, deli ba mandate sa ilaha nga, kung dun na mga informationers, mo, tukod, o building, anan na nga, with and road, right to be lawan, so kana mga karsada na to, apa mo dibulob. Mo, mo kustrak sila mga structures, mga karabang, santis, mga gnan ba, mga structure ya. Pakka, ngatugatug, anan na, ihalublas na, anto, matup, sinan na, then, bete time na, atong, dibulobon, umong karsada, atong i-upin, di takupin, anan ka, unterlocation site. So number one, dia, ako ang suggest, god. Sa to, housing officer. Kena na, naagisay listing sa kada barangay, anan na. Pakahuman, o nailisting, so maka, himo na to, pamaage nga. Mangitatag, ira, boarder relocation, chat, anan niya mga atong informationers. Nakatong na may, may informationers, mga, tawag na to, kana ng, karabang. Natagaan sila, privilege, inan na, di pa kumana na, hilan, pong, pong ligya, dayon. Ato napuglai, ira, anan. So deli, anan na to, to, iya, pelu, kuwan, atagok, kana ng, inan na mga mga, kuwan sa tong, ato, beno, project, project, namangge project na to. So anan, siguro, ato, ato, sugdan eh. Kaya para di, kaya lebatso, lo, kana ng, suro, devastation ba. Na, e, nindut nga, kuwan na to, gimo. Thank you.
Okay, are you through, Honorable Ramos? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I humbly acknowledge the concern raised by the Honorable Ramos pertaining to his proposed ordinance. Being noted that that was referred on the Committee on Rules for review, then that matter was still in the office of the Municipal Engineering's Office, no? Girefer na to na dito, sir, because the title is really mandating, and there was a penal provision on your proposed municipal ordinance. Kaya, ang kuwan dito, ang mga barangay chairman, no? So girefer pa na dito, sir, wala pa nagreply ang Municipal Engineering's Office. Rest assured, na mafollow up na ko na, on the next regular session, the Sambu representation, as chairman of the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions, can render the said committee reports to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaya mas maya magumadali, anan niya. Mas maya madali, kini siya. Kene, ayaw, ayaw na, na, kung sa, provision drey, ng, tanaw na to, kami so, mainpro. Manang iagig na to sa, manang committee, na to ni, committee rule siguro. Sa inpro, siguro, po.
Okay.
Pwede po. Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Ramos, anywhere? Anything else? So, kung, 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 request sa Samsureco?
Mr. Chair, I move for a two-minute recess.
Okay, recess. Any more concerns, other matters? Para makasabot sila? Sige, para masabtan po nila, so anymore? Okay. Renaming.
Um, Mr. Chair, as to the as to the regards of the concern of Samsureco 2, renaming it to Samwangasibugay Electric Cooperative, may I request again the presence of the general manager and/or maybe the head of the Samsureco 2 to come to the to come to this august body, as we have additional queries as to this matter. Yes, on the next regular session.
Okay, Ramon? Apa?
Other matters, oh? Correction with the, kato gisgutan, kana niya, bayan sa kuwan. Problema sa Drills Canal.
Public market?
Public market. So I'd like to, resolution. Requesting the district engineer of the second engineering district of the Department of Public Works and Highways to appear during sa tong next regular session to sit lies on the, kana upen, Drills Canal. Kung der, der pasip.
Okay.
Prapeton, obert, banao. The Drills Canal sa, kana, pointing from the highway to the market.
Okay, in seconded motion? Julis seconded. Discussion? Objection? There being none, the motion is hereby approved. Okay, anymore? Motion for the adjournment? Okay, there's a motion for the adjournment.
San move.
Seconded. The 101st regular session is now adjourned.